Hello, I'm Kathryn Davis, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit questions for a future forum, visit our Facebook page, @LeagueOfWomenVotersRochester Minnesota, for information and deadline for submission. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We would like to thank all candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features the candidates for Olmsted County District 5. Candidates for this seat are Jim Byer and Regina Mustafa. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds to answer. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire minute for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has a 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is LWV Rochester member Kim Norton. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brimajoin, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Wessel. Asking questions will be Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin and Nick Rethmeyer from the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, candidate Mustafa will begin with her opening statement.
Hello, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. I'm Regina Mustafa. My husband and I have lived in Olmsted County now for over 13 years with our two children who attend Rochester Public Schools. In 2019, I earned a master's degree in human services from Winona State University. I completed an internship in our local detox facility. And just this past weekend, I passed my state licensure exam and now am a licensed alcohol and drug addiction counselor. My experience working in behavioral health has really given me the firsthand knowledge of the importance of county services to our area. For years, I have worked tirelessly with my nonprofit organization to build bridges and bridges of understanding between our diverse communities. Among that work is a program called RAHA, which provides financial and peer support to local single mothers regardless of background. My community engagement has included appointments to local boards and commissions, including the City of Rochester Ethical Practices Board, the Olmsted County Human Rights Commission, the Minnesota North Star Chapter of the Sierra Club, and I currently serve as an appointed member of the Rochester-Olmsted Council of Governments, which oversees federal funding towards local infrastructure and transportation needs. And my campaign, really amongst other things, really focuses on the importance of transportation and safe roadways, further integrating our county services to ensure that they work for all of our families, and racial and social justice. And I look forward to tonight's debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
My name's Jim Beer and I'm your current county commissioner. Olmsted County is a diverse, fast-growing community. With the current COVID pandemic and many social issues facing us, it's a time for proven, steady leadership. I provide such leadership. Throughout my tenure, I have fostered a cooperative atmosphere, whether it is with our largest city Rochester, small cities, townships, and the school districts. I have worked hard to heal divisions over annexation of rural lands, as well as facilitating orderly, sustainable growth. Though at times we disagree, we work hard to come to solutions that will work for everyone in the county, whether city, rural, or suburban. Our county is diverse, with Rochester providing a large employment base, while outlying areas provide various living options, as well as a network of excellent recreational opportunities. Some of my accomplishments are: implementation of a drug court for low-risk offenders to offer a second chance while avoiding incarceration, which is both expensive and doesn't always lead to rehabilitation; construction of the third burner, which allows us to handle our waste in an environmental and sustainable way; providing steam and electricity to 27 different facilities. Olmsted County was in the district energy business long before it became fashionable. In 2017, we began a pilot program to place a social worker with our patrol officers. This has proven very successful. Our deputies support it, and it has proven to defuse situations for which a social worker is more properly trained. The county commissioner's job is much more than meeting a couple times a month. We are on over 55 committees and subgroups that meet at various times. We spend an average of 35-plus hours per week addressing citizens' concerns and studying issues. The job demands our full attention. Your county board studies the issues, engages in vigorous debates, makes decisions, and then moves on. We are there to do the work of government without a lot of fanfare. That's what my electorate expects of a functioning board. This is who I am. I'm proud of the work that I have accomplished for Olmsted County, and I look forward to your questions and debate.
Thank you. Our first question comes from the public, and candidate Beer, you will start. What are the county's chief strengths and weaknesses?
Well, our strengths are, you know, we are an arm of the state, as many people know in Minnesota, that's how counties operate. So probably about two-thirds of our business is doing social programs. This amounts to protecting vulnerable adults, kids that are in poor situations that need foster care, and those type of things. We're well-respected in the state for many of the programs that we've done with Mr. Fleischer at our Health and Human Services, and I really think we do an excellent job. We are, that's one of the best things we do. Another good thing that we do is transportation. Our recently-retired county engineer, Mike Sheehan, was recognized nationally for being quite the transportation person. What we do is, we have good people. You know, the county board, we don't make all the decisions. We decide which way the ship is gonna turn, and we try and hire an excellent staff to implement those programs. So I'd say that's what our strengths are.
Thank you. Candidate Mustafa.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. What are the county's chief strengths and weaknesses?
So we, in terms of strengths, I absolutely agree with Mr. Beer. We are definitely blessed to have the amount of services that the county provides. Working in a detox facility, meeting people from the community who are there for substance use treatment, and connecting them directly with family services, affordable housing options and such, other nonprofit organizations. We definitely have a lot of pieces of the puzzle to create an equitable county. Just this past week, with my organization, we helped fund a woman who was eight months pregnant and experiencing homelessness, who had shelter prior to getting into the Jeremiah Program. So these are our strengths. In terms of our weaknesses of the county, despite all of our best efforts, we have yet to truly build an inclusive environment for minorities, marginalized groups, people with disabilities. That is one of our current weaknesses that I fully intend to address when elected as county commissioner. We must include an inclusive society where people from diverse backgrounds are not only at the table, but making decisions at the table, so we can retain a rich and diverse workforce.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin.
A continued need for affordable housing for senior citizens has been cited for years, but attracting development has been difficult. What can the county do to help encourage housing developers build the senior housing that will fill this need?
And candidate Mustafa, you will begin.
It's absolutely, affordable housing, whether it be for our senior citizens and other groups, people with disabilities, it's, we are definitely, we've made some strides, but we are still not meeting the mark of where we need to be. We need to, it turns, anything with affordable housing, we need to work with our city partners, we need to work with our partners at the state to make sure that our partners at the state are doing everything that they can do to create all the possibilities that we have to create affordable, to create affordable housing. And of course, we have to keep in mind that affordable housing, in addition for the elderly community, has to be met with services for mental health, for substance use. We cannot separate these issues from one another.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
You're right. Right now, we don't, affordable housing, whether it's for elderly, or low-income people, or different folks, we're not where we want to be. We have been partnering with our folks at the city and trying to improve this, and I think we have made good strides. Last year, we upped our HRA budget to the maximum allowed by the state, and that's not enough money, obviously, to do all the programs. So it's important, even though we're maximizing how much money Olmsted County taxpayers can put into this program now, that we leverage that money. And to that extent, we've leveraged our money with, for example, Center City Housing out of Duluth to provide housing. We've also leveraged it with some of our local builders, like Weiss Builders, that they know how these tax structures work to get these bonding programs, to get the taxes that they can sell, and they are good at this. So what we need to do, besides having the pot of money that we have, is continue to leverage with our city Rochester, with these outside nonprofit agencies, and with local business builders, to leverage that money to continue to build this, because this is not going away.
Thank you. Our next question actually comes from the league, and candidate Beer, you will answer first. Do you feel the county has received sufficient funds from the state to carry out its duties in Health and Human Services, such as child protection, contract tracing, et cetera?
Well, that's a loaded question, I'll tell you what, because every time it appears to me, and with the COVID going on right now, we're in a good place, I mean, as far as having enough money. We've allocated, Olmsted County has allocated their money judiciously and in appropriate spots, like the $4 million we worked with Ready to give to our small businesses, and the $1 million that we worked with Rochester Area Foundations to help our nonprofits out. The trouble is, and is if you've read in the Star Tribune, the state is gonna, and the federal government, but especially the state, is running into problems. They're gonna have a $7 billion hole in the next biennium. Typically, what they've done, and they did this in the 2008 crisis, and the mayor, I think, would agree with this, they do it to the cities too, is they move the bar, where for certain programs, they used to give you 70%. They'll say, "Well, we don't have the money, so we're only gonna give you 50%," but they will give you no relief on any of the mandates that they do. And child protection is a perfect example. When that poor child got killed up in, I can't remember if it was Becker County or when it was, it was probably about a year ago, then we had to change everything we did for child protection, but we had, they added a bunch of rules, and they gave us no relief, even though they said that Olmsted County was doing an excellent job. And my time's up, and I could go on for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Mustafa.
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Do you feel the county has received sufficient funds from the state to carry out its duties in Health and Human Services, such as child protection, contract tracing, et cetera?
No, I don't believe that it's enough. We need more funding from the state to meet our local Health and Human Services needs. I mean, that's, that's for sure. Yes, we're gonna face a shortage, especially in the light of COVID, and that's going to be extremely challenging, because we have this shortage, but at the same time, that shortage is also creating that need within our community for more services. shortage is also creating that need within our community for more services from the county. So however the state could help us, that, we need more help from the state to meet the mental health needs, the substance use needs, the family service, the child protection, because all these needs are just gonna increase.
Thank you. Our next question will be from the Chamber of Commerce, and candidate Mustafa, you will begin.
How would you evaluate the current economic relief measures deployed by the county to assist local small businesses and nonprofits? As a commissioner, what steps will you take to continue to support local businesses, and what additional tactics can the county employ to strengthen the local economy and provide additional relief?
Uh, I, I do believe that the county has been doing a really good job in allocating funds to make sure that our local nonprofits are getting relief, especially in the era of COVID, with the CARES Act funding. There, there's been special allocation towards behavioral health services, and I think that the county has been doing an excellent job in getting the word out there, actually, about the availability of these funds. It's essential that we continue to support our local nonprofits. Working with a local organization that was a recipient of these county services during my internship as an alcohol and drug addiction counselor, I know how vital these services are, so we have to do all that we can. And in terms of what more we can do with the economy, if we, if we don't have affordable housing, if we don't have an affordable county, we're not gonna be able to support and sustain the workforce and the economy that's going, that's going to grow. So we have to address that core issue before we can address others.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
Could you repeat it, please? Thanks.
How would you evaluate current economic relief measures deployed by the county to assist local small businesses and nonprofits? As a commissioner, what steps will you take to continue to support local businesses, and what additional tactics can the county employ to strengthen the local economy and provide additional relief?
Okay, thank you. Well, one thing we did was, first, we delayed the first half property taxes till Ju- July 15th, I believe, and then we even went further, and we delayed property taxes, all your property taxes, till December 15th. Even though that's a delay, it's not a forgiveness of debt. A lot of, you know, we've got a little bit over the initial hump, we may have a second hump with COVID, and we'll have to deal with that at that time, but people didn't have money, and businesses didn't have money. They were stressed enormously in March, and April, and May. So that gave them a little bit of wiggle room on their property taxes. Not a big deal, but it's one of the things we can do. Like I mentioned before, we took $4 million of the, of the CARES money, and worked with Rochester Area Economic Development to target that, the small businesses, the local small businesses, to give them some relief, whether it's payroll, utility bills, whatever they needed. And we felt that working with Ready, they were more in touch with the small local businesses than if we just tried to disperse that money ourselves. I think up to date, we've got about 3.5 million of that has been dispersed. In addition, we took the $1 million of the CARES money and worked with Rochester Area Foundations to disperse that money to our local nonprofits, Catholic charities, well, my time's up, but again, I'll just quit there. Thanks.
Thank you. This next question comes from the public, and candidate Beer, you will begin. What approaches could be used to improve the relationships between the county and the townships?
Township, well, you know, I was a town board member when I first started, I was on the Kalmer Town Board. And I don't know how many of you people out there in the audience were around in the good old 90s, but if you think things, between the townships and the city of Rochester and the county, and the school districts were bad now, they were pretty bad then. I'm sorry I keep knocking down my thing. I'll, I'll bring that up, and don't start her time till I get that back up. Anyways, I worked hard. That was one of my big planks, to get townships along with the county. I think we've made huge strides. I think we're light years away of where we were when I first was a commissioner. We've got some bumps in the road now, especially with some of the cities, you know, but these are, we just have to have a dialogue. And if we talk face-to-face with COVID's, kind of screwed that up a little bit, I think we can solve a lot of these program, problems. They're not, you know, everybody's got their things that they have to, like the city of Rochester, they have to look out for the city of Rochester. Olmsted County's gotta look out for Olmsted County. But once we understand that, and if you just sit down and have a dialogue and a cup of coffee, you can solve most of these problems. What is not productive is going on Facebook, or Instagram, or any of these other platforms that I am not on, and sniping at other people. That is totally unproductive. So just let me put this up before you start. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's the Farmer Jim.
All right. Thank you, candidate Beer. Candidate Mustafa.
So the question was in regards to the county's relationship to the townships, not the city. Right. So I was out in Kalmer, just attended just last week a meeting at Kalmer Township, and I met some residents out there, and you know, their main concerns are about the roads, you know, the conditions of the roads, when's our road gonna get paved? There was a, there was a resident out there who was pretty upset with the status of his roads. It seems to me that they're, in that meeting, I witnessed a lot of confusion from the residents about what's the township's responsibility, what is the county's responsibility? So I think to improve that relationship, I plan to have regular meetings with constituents at these township meetings, Kalmer and Cascade Townships, to meet these people one-on-one, so they can have a face, a regular contact person, so they don't have these questions about who do I go to at the county? This resident felt very shoved around by people at the county, at the township, and seemed very frustrated. I think if we have better engagement from our county commissioners with the people, regular meetings, getting out into the public, we can greatly improve these relationships.
Great, thank you. This next question actually comes from the League. In, since 2000, several city and county departments consolidated and are now separating. How is this going to affect cooperation between the county and the city? And candidate Mustafa, you can begin.
You know, in theory, it makes sense to consolidate some of these departments, you know, financially. But as we've seen with some departments that were shared by both the county and the city, that just wasn't working out. And actually, in the long run, ended up costing taxpayer dollars. And so some of these, you know, some of these entities had to go their separate ways, in order for the betterment, really, of the people in the community. I think in order for that to, you know, it's just an example, but for these entities to come together again and work more cohesively, we gotta change the players at the table, or I don't think that things are gonna change much.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
I was a proponent, you know, if you're talking about consolidated planning and zoning, I was a proponent of keeping it together. It worked for a long time. I think it started in 1979, and I think it, it still was working. Again, these are things, you know, people were kind of hard and fast in their positions, and they didn't seem to want to move. I think if we would've talked about it some more, we could've done, we could've kept it together. And I would respectfully disagree with Regina on this, because it, you are having a dup- in my opinion, you're having a duplication of services right now with a, with a separate city planning and zoning, and a county planning and zoning. There's just, you know, it's not a huge duplication, but it is a duplication, and it's costing people who want to build houses, or who want to build roads, or want to build subdivisions, or stores, or whatever they want to do. It's costing them more money overall. You know, we could talk about that for a long time, but we only got 75 seconds, so I think we need to do more consolidation, and I would, if we could get back together with that consolidated planning, boy, I'd do that in a second.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Randy Peterson of the Post Bulletin, and candidate Beer, you will begin.
Mental health, housing, transportation, infrastructure, they're just some of the issues that face the county board on a regular basis. If the county had the opportunity to receive funding that could significantly address one of these three issues, which would you seek to fund and why?
You know, that's a, yeah, I don't know. You cannot pick one over the other. If you take all the money, I, I wouldn't say any of them are more important in one case or the other. If you say, "Well, we should put all that money that we got, we got a great big gob of money, and we should put it all into mental health," I wouldn't go for that. Should we put it all into homelessness? I wouldn't go for that. Should we put it in transportation? I wouldn't go for that. We would, I, if we got a gift from the federal government of $10 million, and they said, "Do with it, here's some money, do with it, what you want," I, we would, and I think the rest of the commissioners, we'd want to split it up. We'd do some for mental health, we'd do some for homelessness, we'd do some for transportation. You can't just pick one over the other. That's what makes this job hard. You cannot pick winners and losers. We've got to juggle all these things, and try and make the county a better place with limited resources. And to say if you got, you know, $5 million extra, would you put it all towards mental health? That, that wouldn't happen. It just wouldn't happen. We would split it up, and we would, we'd argue about where we should put some of it, but there's not one part of the county that's more important than the other.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that question?
Mental health, housing, and transportation infrastructure are just some of the issues facing the county board on a regular basis. If the county were to receive funding that could significantly address one, just one of these three issues, which would you seek to fund and why?
Thank you. Absolutely, these, as I've said many times, these issues are so closely intertwined that it is very difficult to put one in priority over the other. But as a county commissioner, as an elected official, sometimes you have to make those tough choices, and you have to put maybe more funding. And if the question is which one, what I have to put funding towards, we have to address the housing first. So working in detox, when we have a client leave, who'd just been there for three days, and they come back six hours later intoxicated, because he had nowhere else to go, but he knows if he gets intoxicated, he's got free room and board for the next three days, that costs the county money for him to stay in detox those three nights. We have to address the housing first. Who cares about my substance use disorder if I'm living under a bridge? We have to tackle things first. If we can tackle everything at once, yes, but the question was, what would I tackle first? We have to take care of people's basic needs, food, shelter, safety, then we provide them with the services for mental health, for substance use, for vocational training, all the other wonderful things that our county does.
Thank you. This next question comes from the League, and we'll begin with you, candidate Mustafa. What do you favor doing about the intersection of 60th Street and Highway 14?
Avenue. It's avenue.
60th Street, 60th Avenue. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Candidate Mustafa.
Thank you. So what I am in favor, and sitting on the ROCOG, you know, this, that intersection has come to our attention many times, and I've lived very close at an intersection. What I do know is something has to be done with that intersection as soon as possible. Somebody said it's like playing Frogger when you're on that intersection. It's, it's extremely dangerous. The $40 million option that the county was recommended with the interchange and the overpass, it doesn't seem that the bonding fund from the state is going to come through for that. The J-turn, the reduced conflict intersection, I feel that that is the best option that we have right now. We had the $40 million option as Plan A, closing the intersection as Plan B, I've been looking for Plan C. What can we do as a compromise here, until we can finally get that funding? And I believe, and MDOT recommended the J-turn as the best option, those are the professionals, I believe that is the best option. It's not gonna re, it's not gonna negate or get rid of every possible collision, but it is going to greatly reduce the deadly crashes, the rate of deadly crashes that we see at that intersection currently.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
That intersection's been a source of frustration for me for quite some time. We've had quite a few fatalities there, I can't give you the exact number, and, you know, the $40 million, what's really frustrating to me was, two Tuesdays ago, a couple weeks ago, we had MINDOT give us their 10-year plan, 10-year plan for our district. Anything in that intersection was not in their 10-year plan. That was incomprehensible to me. Even the J-turn thing, that came up late in the day, that wasn't even in their 10-year plan. They had nothing to do for 10 years in there. That's not acceptable. We have offered MINDOT, we can bond for it, Olmsted County can bond the $40 million. We just want MINDOT to pay us back their share, you know, at some point. They won't even do that. So we can do the $40 million. We could start that intersection next fall. The planning is done, property acquisition is going forward. The J-turn is not acceptable. In some areas, it is. And again, I'll respectfully disagree with Regina. Our traffic engineers, Kay Beniak and Mike Sheehan, recently retired, J-turn will not work there. You've got large semis, school buses, and farm vehicles who cannot negotiate that U-turn that the J-turn needs. So I'll stop, but let's talk about that some more.
I can use mine.
Yeah. Rebuttal from candidate Mustafa.
There you go. Like I said, the J-turn may not be the ideal solution for that intersection. No doubt, the overchange, the intersection and the overpass might be the best in terms of semis and stuff, but a J-turn option is definitely better than what we have there right now. And if that can be implemented sooner, that is what we need to do. And of course, I really wanted to raise my rebuttal card to add that any decision has to have community feedback. We have to have transparency in our county government. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Rebuttal by candidate Beer.
Yeah, the J-turn, the reason J-turns will work at some places, they won't work there. Our engineers are deadly against the J-turns. You can't have a semi. What a J-turn does is, you turn right, and within a half mile, you gotta accelerate up to highway speed, move over two lanes, and then do a U-turn, and accelerate back another half mile, and then make, go across two more lanes of traffic, and then get across the road. It won't work there. There's too much traffic. You have to have this intersection as a divided grade.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Nick Greshmeier from the Chamber of Commerce.
As the lead on public health during the COVID-19 pandemic, Olmsted County has, has a significant responsibility to work with local entities to keep people safe and educated. What steps will you take to continue this community outreach and education? And what are the critical elements to keep our economy open and the dials turned in the right direction?
My first.
My apologies. Candidate Beer.
Yeah, I thought it was first. Well, Graham Briggs is our public health person, and he's been doing a yeoman's job. I think, I can't think of much he's done wrong. We, I pretty much fully support any decisions he's made. I think, I think we've done an excellent job separating the noise and the static from the facts, and working with the small businesses to try and keep them open. And then when we got bad players, people that aren't even trying to keep their, you know, businesses open, rather than paint a broad brush, we've been working with those businesses, and in some cases, we've closed them down for a few days to get their attention, to get them into compliance. And I think basically what we're doing is, is stay the course, I guess. I would just least say, stay the course.
Can you please repeat the question?
As the lead on public health during the COVID-19 pandemic, Olmsted County has a significant responsibility to work with local entities to keep people safe and educated. What steps will you take to continue this community outreach and education? And what are the critical elements to keep our economy open and the dials turned in the right direction?
I, I absolutely agree with Mr. Beer that our public health director has been doing a phenomenal job getting the information out there through all avenues as possible. His message has been very clear from the get-go about the mask mandate. We need to continue to reach out to our small businesses, we need to respond as quickly as possible to complaints that are coming in from, not just from people in the public, but also from employees. I've heard stories of employees fearing going into work because they see their own managers not complying with the mask mandate. That very much concerns me. So we have to make sure that we are on top of all the inquiries and the complaints coming in, that we continue to educate the public all throughout Olmsted County, reach out to their community members, people who are trusted and known in their communities, especially with our minority communities, where the information may not be reaching as far as we would like. And we need to be very stringent with the mask, with the mask mandate, and just continuing to get on top of these complaints, and working more with information into our communities is what we need to strengthen and keep doing.
Thank you. This next question comes from the League, and we'll begin with candidate Mustafa. The Zumbro Valley Medical Society has called for the county board to pass a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. If the county board adopts such a resolution, what actions should the county take?
Uh, well, let me just say, I do, I hope that the county board does adopt it, because racism is absolutely 100% a public health crisis. So as county commissioner, I will call for a complete overhaul of county So as county commissioner, I will call for a complete overhaul of county practices in terms of diversity and inclusion training. We need to change the percentage of the, I believe, only 7% of county staff are non-white. Right now, the target percentage is 12%, which reflects the ethnic racial makeup of the Olmsted County itself. That percentage needs to be changed so it can reflect the racial and ethnic identities of the people who receive county services. We need to make sure that we are requiring diversity, inclusion training across the board, across all county sectors to ensure that our clients, the people who live in Olmsted County can have better relationship with the services because their service providers are going to reflect them, their languages, their cultural backgrounds. That's absolutely what we need to do. We need to address systemic racism and it exists in all of our local entities, from the school, from the city to the county. It needs to be addressed heads-on.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
Could you repeat it?
Absolutely. The Zumbro Valley Medical Society has called for the county board to pass a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. If the county board adopts such a resolution, what actions should the county take?
I haven't seen that from the Zumbro Valley, but I'd be interested to see when that comes to our board. One thing that we've done, and it's a major thing, is we've implemented One Olmsted. And what that does is it identifies, and we need to identify and understand and address systemic and institutional barriers that impede people's probability to succeed in Olmsted County. And to that end, our administrator, Heidi Welsh, has implemented this One Olmsted program. And we were working on it before she became administrator, but she's brought more to the front. It's not an overnight thing. It takes time to institute this. But we're looking at our hiring practices, the people we serve, having more training for people. It's a whole litany. Again, we could go on for that for probably the whole hour. But if you'd like to see that, I'd encourage you to go to Olmsted County's website and look at One Olmsted. So we are trying to address this. We're not standing still. I don't know if it's the solution, but it's a solution that we're working on with our commissioners and with our whole county staff.
Thank you. Candidate Mustafa for rebuttal.
Yes, I've seen the One Olmsted document on the website, which was passed in 2017, but from my knowledge, I haven't seen any metrics coming from One Olmsted. And there certainly isn't any information on the website, the county website, about that, how One Olmsted has helped move the needle in terms of diversity, inclusion, and rooting out systemic racism within the county government. I absolutely do believe there are people at the county who are very passionate about making this a more inclusive and welcoming community, but yet, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the public and candidate Mustafa, you will begin. Do you support the county having building energy efficiency standards similar to Rochester?
Yes, absolutely. I support the county building energy and efficiency standards on par with Rochester. I think the county should be doing everything that it can to support the city of Rochester's 100% renewable energy goal by, I believe, the year 2030, 2031. The one way I think the county could have helped move that along was with the district energy plan. When the county decided to go its own separate way in terms of taking care of its own half of the cost of the heating and cooling of the city and county buildings, yes, it was greater cost upfront, but in terms of greenhouse emissions, it would have been reduced over time and also in time, it actually would have saved the county money. So yes, I do, and I believe that that's one way the county could move along that route. Thank you.
Candidate Beer.
Yeah, when we've built our latest buildings, a Health and Human Services building and the Public Works facility, we went to LEED certification. I don't know if it was platinum or, I don't know all the different levels, but we went to, if not the highest, one of the highest levels that we've done. So when we build buildings, we build them to be energy efficient. With regard to the district energy system, that's a little bit of a burr under my saddle because we were serving the library, the civic center, the government center, I forget which, some of, a lot of the buildings downtown with our waste energy, which is 100% renewable energy. We're burning the garbage. And we had to replace the condensate line, which is, you know, it's 30 years old. So we went around and, you know, that's a big cost. We wanted to make sure that everybody was going to stay on it and nobody wanted to stay on the system. So when you talk about being on a district energy system, the one that they're planning on putting in now is going to burn natural gas, we had one down there. We could have expanded it, burning trash, and there was not a lot of interest there. So we're abandoning that because none of our partners were interested in continuing to have that renewable, 100% renewable energy. So I think we're in the district energy business.
Thank you. This next question comes from the public as well. What changes or improvements to county parks do you see in the future? And candidate Beer, you may begin.
Well, we've got the grant, we finally got some of that 3A sales tax money that we, everybody's been paying around here for, I don't know how many years since we passed that amendment up at the state, finally got some of that money coming back to help us fix up Oxbow. We got a major expansion out there. Oxbow is used by many groups, many school groups. That park is used a lot. And I tell you what, it's, this expansion is overdue, so we're expanding that. We've added Root River State Park down there. Right now, there's only horse trails and some walking trails, but that's a beautiful area down there by Fugel's Mill, and we intend to make improvements as we go along. Our parks, county parks, are meant to be not playgrounds like city parks are where they have monkey bars and slides and teeter totters and, you know, those type of things. They're meant for everybody, to be able to recreate a horseback ride, mountain bike ride where applicable, you know, take nature walks, more of that type of a park. It's a different park. It's not one's better than the other. It's a different type of park system. But I think we're, we've done a pretty good job there.
Candidate Mustafa.
I was at Oxbow. Yes, I love Oxbow. Shout out to my daughter, the snowy owl is her favorite bird at Oxbow. So I was there actually and I met some people who are totally blind. I'm visually impaired myself, legally blind, and they recommended an improvement to Oxbow with to have more signage and braille, especially along the trails, so they could get information about the kinds of trees that are along the trails. I thought that was brilliant, and I use braille sometimes as well. That was a brilliant suggestion. I think we need to make sure that the parks that we currently have in terms of the accessibility for people with disabilities within those parks, how can we improve that so that our parks are welcomed and used by all of our residents? And I also would like to throw in there that any, this may be a little bit further off the track of the topic of parks, but any county pathway that's owned by the county has to be reassessed to ensure that people with wheelchairs, people with strollers that are able to use these pathways, because I've seen lots of images coming in from social media about some of the poor conditions of our current county pathways. So we need to look at that and we need to also ensure that our current parks are accessible to everybody.
Yes, candidate Beer for rebuttal.
I just want to ask Regina.
Yeah.
If you've got those, if people are, you know, telling you that there's pathways, I take that pretty seriously. And send them to me because, I mean, I take that pretty seriously. Our paths should be opened. I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
If we got trees growing in the middle of paths or something, please send those to me. I mean, I know we're, but I think we're in the same boat on this one because I'll make sure that gets taken care of.
Well, yeah, they know who their county commissioner is.
All right, thank you. Our next question comes from the public. How do you plan to involve your constituents in decision-making? And candidate Mustafa, you will begin.
I plan to hold bi-weekly meetings throughout the county once elected, not just expecting people from the community to come find me, to seek out my info, contact information on the internet. We need to start showing up. A lot of people do not know who their county commissioners are, and I do believe that overall, there has not been the engagement that our community members deserve. So bi-weekly meetings, in-person, through virtual means, keep in mind of people with disabilities or mobility issues, making sure that they are reached, going into minority communities, going into minority businesses. And with the connections and the networks that I currently have with diverse populations from Byron all the way into Rochester throughout the county, I'm going to continue and bring those to the table and continue to branch out and make sure that people's voices are heard because the county commissioner seat is so important. The decisions they make are so vital, but a lot of people just do not know about that. They don't know about the decisions that we make, so we have to have better outreach. And with major decisions that we're making, it has to have public feedback before we make these decisions.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. How do you plan to involve your constituents in your decision-making?
You know, when I first got elected 18 years ago, I had a lot of coffees. I'd have them out at Otto's in Byron. I have them up at, up on Elton Hills there, across from the rec center. And after a while, the same people start showing up. And, I mean, I've reached out to a number of people. We used to have a place called Friendship Place out on Third Avenue that would help minority kids with their homework. I'd show up there and help them with their homework sometimes. We'd have stuff out at the History Center. And you show up and after a while, I mean, you're seeing the same people over and over and over. I like to try and get diverse people asking me questions. I am not afraid of having people ask me questions, but the same people are always showing up. It was the same group of people. So, you know, if people have ideas for me to be more accessible, I'm willing to meet with anybody. I'm semi-retired farmer. I've got a lot of time on my hands and I really do enjoy talking with people, getting different perspectives. If people have ideas, I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to try anything different. Now I got a website, never used to have a website, so, you know, maybe I can do better. I don't know, but I try to be accessible. People find me, I know that.
All right, thank you, candidate Beer. The next question comes from the league and candidate Beer, you will begin. What suggestions do you have to improve the relationship and accountability between law enforcement and local communities of color?
You know, I think we had this question, or a similar question when we had a forum with the NAACP, and I think our sheriff, in our particular county, with our particular sheriff, I think Sheriff Torgerson does a heck of a job. I think he, he goes and meets with minority groups and I think he's actually got a good relationship with them. I think our, the sheriff and the deputies are pretty well-respected in this county. Now, are there problems? There's always problems. There's always people on both sides of an issue that think something's wrong. But boy, I tell you, our sheriff has done a very good job and our county board really supports him. He's done a lot of outreach. Again, he's an elected official, so got to be a little bit careful. It's different than a chief of police because people vote for the sheriff. You know, we can, the county board controls his purse strings and we control the county attorney's purse strings, but at the end of the day, they're two elected officials, so they can pretty much set their own agenda. But I think that our sheriff has done a pretty darn good job. Is it perfect? Probably not, but I think he's done a good job.
Thank you. Candidate Mustafa.
Can you please repeat the question?
You bet. What suggestions do you have to improve the relationship and accountability between law enforcement and local communities of color?
If we're talking about law enforcement and our local communities of color, I think the sheriff's department, we could start by actually publicly admitting that systemic racism is an issue within the sheriff's department. I know Sheriff Torgerson. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the difficult job that he does while working in detox. I worked alongside with members of RPD, county deputies, deputies from other counties. I know what it's like when you have the counselor and you have the law enforcement and when they respect the work that each other does, how powerful that can be for communities and especially communities of color and other marginalized groups. I would love to continue to extend the program to help outreach within the sheriff's department, increasing funding in the sheriff's department towards more behavioral health professionals, especially from communities of color. We need to have deputies that come and actually reflect the diverse communities that we, that they swear to protect and serve. Better community outreach, better hiring practices for diverse deputies and people and deputies of color, and increasing the funding towards behavioral health workers working alongside those deputies. That's what I would suggest. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next question comes from the league and candidate Mustafa, you will begin. This past winter, the county in cooperation with the city and nonprofit agencies provided shelter and services for people who are homeless. What should the county do about this issue going forward?
I think the county should continue to put forth its share of funding towards continuing the day shelter and the warming shelter. I know that the county has, is now leasing, I think, providing up to 18 transitional rooms at 105 North Broadway at another site. I believe that this was a great decision by the county, totally support that. We need to continue those efforts. And I would like to see a permanent housing structure for people experiencing homelessness that's directly connected to services. The woman that I helped, she was sitting up all day waiting for the warming shelter to open because she had nowhere else to go. Imagine being eight months pregnant and sitting up all day in a coffee shop waiting for the warming center to open. All other resources she exhausted in the community. We have to do more to help people like her because there's unfortunately so many out her, so many out there that had, are in her situation. So we need to continue to work with HRA, our nonprofit organizations, continued our funding towards our portion of the warming shelter. I would love to see the day shelter open back up as well.
Thank you. Candidate Beer.
Can you repeat it?
Absolutely. This past winter, the county in cooperation with city and nonprofit agencies provided shelter and services for people who are homeless. What should the county do about this issue going forward?
Well, as I pointed out earlier, we're maxed out on our HRA by state law. We can't put any more money into the HRA. So it's imperative, and I think we've done a good job, to leverage that money to work with our partners at the city, with the mayor. I'd like to thank, publicly thank her right here for the warming shelter and the nonprofit in this case with the warming shelter that we had Catholic charities helped us out. There's always going to be a need. I mean, there's always going to be, Regina's right. We need to continue to do that. But the other thing that we need, that doesn't get a lot of attention and where I think we do a really good job is Paul Fleischner and David Dunn. David Dunn's the head of our HRA and Paul Fleischner is our Health and Human Services. They work very hard and I think out of the 18 people that we have at the housing, they have put those 17 or 16 or 17 of those people, they've found them some permanent housing, you know, whether it's the Francis or wherever. Art, Paul, and David worked very hard to get these people out of the warming shelter and find them some type of supportive housing, whether it's out at our, oh, I can't think of it, the Wethouse or different areas. I got to quit now because I have to stop.
All right, thank you. And that actually concludes our question portion of the evening. And so we are going to move to, to closing statements and candidate Beer, you may begin.
Okay. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this debate. It's been a pleasure to share my views of Olmsted County. Why am I the right candidate? I'm a proven leader. When we faced the housing crisis in 2008, I worked very hard to find a solution to ease the burden. We could not stop all the pain, but we dared our best to provide help where it was needed. In today's climate with COVID, social unrest, and increasing homelessness, Olmsted has stepped up to the challenge. Our public health department has done outstanding work. The state of Minnesota has even relied on our expertise. We have worked closely with Mayo and Olmsted Medical Group to provide testing and contact tracing in our county. We are held as an example of steady and consistent information. Implementation of embedding social workers with law enforcement in 2017 has been highly successful and the de-escalation of situations that in the past may have spiraled out of control. It's been so successful that we have expanded it. We have worked closely with the city on the homeless issue. Though this issue is not completely solved, we are heading in the right direction, partnering with the city as well as those in the nonprofit sector such as Catholic charities. We need to continue to improve our transportation infrastructure. Whether it's autos, buses, bicycles, or pedestrians, all are important and will be part of our future plans. Though we have encountered a hiccup on the south transportation hub, I'm confident that working with our partners, a solution will be reached. We need to provide a full spectrum of housing options. That is why I voted to increase the HRA levy to allow the county to work with agencies such as Center City Housing to help leverage these dollars to provide more bang for the buck. I've tried hard to make your county a better place. Whether it's the 76% of my district in Rochester, the city of Byron, or the rural folks I represent, I'm proud of my record. Though you may not agree with me on every single issue, I hope you agree I'm working I'm proud of my record. Though you may not agree with me on every single issue, I hope you agree I'm working to make Olmsted County a great place to work and live. I'm Jim Beer, and I'm the right person at the right time in the right place to continue to serve as your commissioner. More information can be found on my website at reelectjimbeer.com. Please remember to exercise your right to vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
All right, candidate Mustafa.
Thank you again, everybody, for watching. Over the years, I have proven that I have the knowledge and understanding necessary to ensure a transparent, fair, and just decision-making. I look forward to working to get to know the needs of my district, and I encourage conversations with people from the community. I know I'm a better person, and I'll be a better representative when I engage with others whose opinions and life experiences are different than my own. We need to ask ourselves a couple of questions here. Do we really know our community? Do we really know them? That has to direct the decisions that we make at the local level. And we also have to ask ourselves, what are the needs of our community? What are their basic needs? Are we meeting them? That will determine where I will be voting for funding. Are our needs being met? I feel that with this position, this elected seat as county commissioner, that I can do a lot of good with this seat. The work that I've been doing tirelessly in this community, I feel I can do even more if elected to county commissioner. I feel that it is time for new leadership in this role, someone who has both the lived and professional experiences that ties so closely with what people need the county to do for their lives. Thank you again. I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Please go to MNvotes.org for your mail-in ballot if you haven't done so already, and you can reach out to me and learn more by going to my website at MustafaforOlmsted.com. I thank Mr. Beer for his years of service, and I thank everyone again.
Thank you, and thank you, candidates. I would like to thank each of our candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thank you to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 3rd and that early voting has begun. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit MNvotes.org for more information on the process. Please do remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place or would like to see your sample ballot, visit Vote11.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everyone.